Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order the irregularly scheduled Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. We'll go ahead and start with roll call.
Chairman Dana Henness.
Present.
Commissioner Brian Clark.
Present.
Commissioner Jim Mann.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Rosadello.
Thank you. First up is a consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, and so first up on our items tonight for public hearings is case number 25-01-PUD, 25-04-S, 25-03-CC, and 25-06-DR for Napa Vineyards, which is a continuation from October 14th meeting. Troy?
Thank you very much for that lead-in. Appreciate that. Commissioners, for the record, Troy Behunen, Development Services Department, Kuna, Idaho. This is a continuation of the Napa Vineyards Plan Unit Development, also known as the PUD, that was continued from the October 14th hearing. Tonight, we're just going to pick off, pick up where we left off. At the end of the meeting, it was discussed that tonight's meeting would be opened for the introduction of three critical agency comments, which have all been submitted, and they're in the packet available for the public and also for the commission. That would be for ACHD, ITD, and also Public Works. At the end of the meeting, there was a motion for the continuation to allow the public to give testimony on those three items, and limited to those three items, but that it would be opened up to the public again, and then the applicant would be able to rebut anything and answer any of the questions that the commission has for anything, not just for those project, for those three items, but for anything. And staff will also be here in case you have questions for staff. And with that, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Is there anything we need to address before we open back up for a public hearing or testimony? I don't think so. I don't think so. Okay, so, and actually, we never closed a public testimony, did we? So, we just need to continue.
That's correct.
So, is there any other folks here in the audience tonight that would like to testify on this application that did not sign up? Okay, and seeing none, I will go ahead and ask the applicant if they would like to come up with a rebuttal. Okay. I'm sorry, sir. Did you want to testify on the application?
Yes, sir.
Come on up. We'll have you sign in. Come on up here, please. Just your name and address, so we can have it in the record. Is there anybody else that just came in that would like to testify on the application for the Napa Vineyards tonight? Just you?
For the Napa Vineyards.
Yeah. Okay, and you can go ahead and take the podium. At the base of the microphone, there's a light. Can you just press that until it turns green? And then if you would, state your name and address for the record.
Michael Anderson, 8400 South Updale Avenue, Meridian.
And you go ahead and speak.
To which application?
For this is the Napa Vineyards application, which is the residential and commercial addition that along Meridian Road between Hubbard and Columbia.
Okay. I would like to know what research has been done to the facilities that would be needed to support this size of a facility would be needed, has been done to this point. If the adequate research hasn't been done, why are we going forward with this?
Do you have a particular area that you're asking for the research of?
Water, power.
Okay.
That would be my main concerns. School, of course. But water and power and sewer would be the main concerns for me, being a current resident of the area.
Okay. And the applicant will hopefully answer some of these questions. Where is there anything else?
I'm looking for specifics.
Okay.
Not generalities.
Okay.
What, what do we have here that would support what they're proposing? Or what would it take to support that if the current facilities don't support that?
Correct. And that's what they would need to, they would need to elaborate on.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll ask once again, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to testify on this application that has not signed up yet? Okay, and seeing none, I'll go ahead and close. Well, I guess we'll have the rebuttal first. So, applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission. Stephanie Hopkins with Kuna Engineering. Our address is 5725 North Discovery Way. I will talk about the utilities and some of the services that are provided per Mr. Anderson's question or comments. Public Works is one of the staff reports that we were waiting on at the last hearing, and since that hearing, they have submitted comments that include a variety of conditions and requirements that would be imposed on this project. They do that for every project. So, they usually will review and assess a project and determine what the city's current capacity levels are and require improvements to sewer water and utilities that they manage. So, one of the things here is that the Mason Creek trunk line is going to be extended as part of this project. It's actually going to be a huge improvement to the Kuna sewer capacity. And as part of this, they are requiring or requesting an easement that would be brought through this project as well to help with that extension. Water is addressed as well, and I'm trying to find specific conditions with that. There is a city well that's approved, and this, this project would have to contribute to that city well to be able to increase the capacity within Kuna. And we discussed this in the last hearing, but this project is required to pay impact fees for each lot that is proposed with building permits. So, those fees go to fund these different entities that serve the city of Kuna. So, that includes water, it will include sewer, parks, police, all of, all of the different services and entities that are impacted by development. Another, another thing to note is that anything that we design will have to go through the city engineer for approval before we're actually able to construct or even get approval on construction plans. So, there's a pretty rigorous review process that this project will have to go through. And it's a large project, so it's 242 acres. There are going to be, I believe, 11 phases of development. So, the first phase is about 66 single-family residential homes. It also includes the fire station lot and a commercial lot that's in the northwest corner. All of that first phase will be reviewed by the city engineer, as well as other reviewing agencies within, that have jurisdiction in city of Kuna. So, Department IDUQ, there would be ID, sorry, all these acronyms, Idaho Transportation Department, ACHD. Idaho Power will even review our plans, and they'll have to determine if they have the capacity and ability to serve. Idaho Power and other servicers within the Treasure Valley are constantly looking at development that's going on, and they're upsizing facilities to accommodate growth in the Treasure Valley. So, there will be adequate services, and if there aren't adequate services, this development would be required to upsize whatever it is that is being impacted. So, that is, I think, hopefully addresses that question and concern. I'll let Sonya maybe cover the traffic stuff, because that was a huge topic of discussion the last time around. And we have a presentation if you want to see anything that would help visual-wise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Chair Commissioners, Sonya Deliden with Kittleson and Associates. The address is 101 South Capitol Boulevard, Suite 600 in Boise. Although there wasn't public testimony on it tonight, I know we did leave the hearing open, waiting on the detailed staff reports from the Ada County Highway District and Idaho Transportation Department. So, I just wanted to add that those have both been received, as Troy mentioned, and the applicant is in full agreement with all of the conditions listed by ACHD and ITD related to the transportation system. I can, happy to answer any detailed questions about any of the specific transportation mitigations, but there's an extensive list, I think 50 in the ACHD report, and then several in the ITD report as it relates to Highway 69, related to new roadway construction, roadway widening, turn lane additions, new traffic signals at certain triggers. And yet, we're, the applicant's in full agreement with all those conditions, and will be implementing those if they receive approval to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the commission at this time?
Sure. For our traffic engineer, one question I have is the intersection of Linder Road and Columbia. The thing that, that I'm a little concerned with is ACHD said typically the applicant would be required to improve this intersection, but since there's no available right-of-way, therefore, no mitigation is required. So, how can it be something that would be recommended by both the traffic study and ACHD, but not required, just because there's no right-of-way? Wouldn't there be, wouldn't there be something that would indicate that right-of-way need to be, needed to be acquired for that?
Chair Commissioner, thank you for the question. Yeah, it's a great question. So, the way it is written in the ACHD staff report is actually a pretty typical condition in that type of situation. ACHD and the developer, they are not able to acquire right-of-way from a private property owner that this applicant does not have control over. So, this applicant does not have any legal mechanism to go about acquiring right-of-way from a private property owner to implement a project if it's not available. What they are doing, and the condition that ACHD has put in this case, is they have required the developer to do follow-up study at that intersection if right-of-way becomes available in the future. And this development is also paying traffic impact fees to ACHD. Those traffic impact fees go towards a general pool right now that ACHD can use to either purchase right-of-way in the future, or implement projects that are on its capital improvement plan. Linder, Columbia is an intersection that does have a future capital improvement plan project. So, although ACHD can't force this developer to go out and purchase right-of-way or acquire right-of-way from another property owner, they are paying into a future pool of money that ACHD can use to implement improvements there in the future.
How, how will they implement improvements there in the future if they can't acquire the right-of-way?
Well, so, ACHD is a government entity. They do have the ability to, if property in that area does redevelop, to acquire, to require whoever is doing that redevelopment to donate right-of-way. As a government entity, they also have the power to go out with eminent domain and purchase right-of-way from the property owners there if they see the public need for improvements in the future. So, that's how ACHD would go ahead and do an improvement there in the future. However, they just can't require another private entity, such as this developer, to go and get right-of-way from another private entity, because we don't have, or a private entity doesn't have the government authority of eminent domain.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any further questions?
So, I guess the only question I have at this point is based on these conditions, it does look like a lot of this is actually developer, not just funded, but developer construction, correct?
Chair Commission, that is absolutely correct. I mean, anything in the ACHD staff report that says is a condition of approval, that would be both funded and constructed by the development. And then if you look at the ITD staff report, they do require turn lane funding and construction at 69 in Columbia, 69 in Deer Flat, and then 69, excuse me, 69 in Hubbard, and then a potential new signal at Mason Creek in 69 when the subsequent phase of the development moves forward. There are some general funds that are required through impact fees and proportional share contributions that then would be, would be used by the agencies for construction. But everything else written in the staff reports would be developer-funded and constructed. That's correct.
Anything further?
No.
Thank you.
With that, I'll go ahead and close the public testimony at 6:17. And that'll bring up our deliberation.
It's a big one.
Yeah, yeah, that's an understatement.
Not to understate things, but I think that's really the big thing that we're up against here. It does, as a big project, does potentially accelerate the need for a lot of these improvements, which is potentially a benefit, including the trunk line, sewer trunk line, as well as a lot of these permanent road improvements. But that does come with a cost. Our schools are, again, we can't overstate that enough. Our schools are currently inundated, even though this comes with a school site. It's, it doesn't come with the funding to build, a building on the school site. So, now, just as a reminder, or just as a afterthought on the school issue, there is stipulation in the contract that school gets first, first opportunity for denial, I can't remember what the exact phrasing is, but they get first crack at the land.
Right, first right of refusal.
First right of refusal, thank you. So, that's another piece of the puzzle.
Yeah, I mean, we can't get a lot of these road improvements without a development funding a lot of these. And it's kind of a double-edged sword, and we've talked about this over the last few years, that the need arises after, actually, the construction arises after the need a lot of the time, and that's how it is in highway districts all throughout the nation. I mean, they're never building roads ahead of time. They just can't, even though it makes sense. But to get these improvements that are badly needed in a lot of these intersections, there needs to be somebody that does it. And although this project would give a lot of that traffic mitigation that is needed in that area, it's at the cost of a lot of extra people and, you know, and impact going in. But I really, I still struggle with the whole school thing. I appreciate the fact that they're given a school site, but again, we've got several locations throughout our city here that have had the donations by the developers, but they can't get the funds to build the schools. And we can have as many sites as we can tolerate, but if we can't build a school on it, it does not help. And if we had 200 or 300 homes coming in, it'd be different than 1,500. And, and I know that the school representative last time had stated that the numbers to the amount of peoples, it used to, amount of people coming in, it used to be 1.2 children per household or per door, basically, and it's now down to what they estimate at .5 per door. That's better than what it used to be, but it's still 700 more kids at the school at best, or you know, at, yeah, at best. And none of them near that area have that capacity. The nearest ones are Silver Trails, and they're already at overcapacity. And so, I've still got a real hard time saying that this large of a, of an area, even though it has so many benefits to the city, the traffic, the Mason trunk line extension, so many of this infrastructure build-outs, I mean, they're going to have to bring improved power down that way. They're going to have to improve the pressurized irrigation, et cetera, for that, that area.
Which is taxed.
Right. And we've got commercial coming in that'll help the tax base. It's just the schools are what kill me on this one. I don't know.
A question for the developer's rep. You've indicated that there's a school site on the property, and that the school district has the first right of refusal. Is this a dedicated school site if, in fact, the, the school district does refuse the property? I know in past projects, Mr. Eck has partnered with charter schools to build facilities. Is that what they would be looking at here also?
Just, just for the record, you'd have to reopen the public hearing, I believe, in order to ask the development, the developer the question, but, but I can answer it for you.
Oh, could you answer that for me, Troy?
So, just to make sure that I understand your question, you know, what happens if the school district doesn't take that? What, what happens to that property? Is that essentially the question?
Correct.
So, the way that the development agreement that was approved by City Council reads is that they have the first right of refusal. He has other options that are available to him if that does happen. A charter school would be the fallback position. At least that's, that's the testimony, and that's what he's conveyed to staff. And yes, it does seem like a pattern being established, but where everybody is concerned with funding schools and things like that, charter schools have shown that they don't have the same funding, financial issues. But, but that would be the, that would be the case.
So, I have a follow-on to this question, Jim, if you don't mind. I respect Mr. Eck and everything he's done. He's done a lot of great work, but does this amount to a handshake? Or is there any guarantee that that is reserved for a school of some sort in the future? Because, again, I, he's, I like what he does, and I think that's great, but I just, are we guaranteed a school site?
I think maybe to back end on that is, because it's, it's stated in, in the presentations that it's a school or park. So, if, if, I think what we're asking is if the school district refuses that right to purchase it, or to take it, then does it go to a, a park or another school? I mean, what's the guarantee on that?
For the record, Doug Hanson, Planning and Zoning Director, the only real guarantee for that, if the school district were not to take the site, is that it would have to be something to count towards qualified open space. So, it could be a school, or it could be a park. It couldn't ever be developed as homes.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, he has a good track record. I don't doubt that would be his goal, but it just has to be said that there's possibility that it'll, I mean, and, you know, it's still for public benefit, at the very least.
Correct. Yeah, we're only so easy. I mean, they're willing to, to do all the traffic mitigation requirements, and that's extensive with what has been presented by both ACHD and everything we all know. These need to be done. And I don't think there's much of a way we'd get it without it.
Well, I mean, the benefit of a larger development like this is with the sheer number of required improvements. Now, the way those conditions are written, and staff, please correct me if I'm wrong, the only, the only milestone I saw in there was, I believe, the 200 lot for a couple of traffic signal improvements. Everything else looks like it's, no, you're going to construct this without a timeline. So...
There was one 300 lot.
There was one 300 lot.
As well. But everything else is that, yeah, that's as far up as it went.
So, based on my reading, these are, so, staff, how is this going to be worked out? Is this a, you will have this in before you get your first building permit? Or is this kind of a, before you close your last building permit, these things need to be done?
For the record, Troy Behunen, so, there, there are milestones, there are certain things that they have to accomplish prior to the final plat getting signed by the city and by ACHD. Remember, ACHD has a signature on the final plat, every final plat. So, they've got to be in. Whatever they say has to be in by the 201st lot, 301st lot, they have to be in.
Correct.
In, built, tested, approved, accepted.
Right. I think what Brian's asking is there were several conditions in there that really didn't state at to what level it had to be done. So, do we assume that they were done in the, need to be done in the beginning? Or, because I only saw the 220th lot and the 300th lot, and the others just kind of were in between. So, they weren't real clear to me.
Yeah, so, starting at condition five, dedicate right-of-way Columbia Road. It doesn't appear to be tied to a, unless there's a statement in here, all other conditions shall be...
So, those, those, those individual or those in-between without a lot assigned to them is going to be controlled by whatever phase of that project it, it fronts. So, if, if that requirement is for phase five, but it is in-between the 221st and the 200, 321st, if it's in-between there, it's going to be ruled by the frontage, and, and that is the standing ACHD condition. So, you have to, I mean, there are some floating conditions, yes, but they also have their standard procedure where, you know, you've got to improve everything along your frontage and what is deemed to be a part of it. So, if they have to extend a turn lane, or if they have to extend a, you know, an excel lane or a decel lane ahead of other improvements, they've got to do that for that phase. They have to become whole with ACHD and the city the entire way, whether there's a milestone or not.
Okay. And I think we just want this, not just to be clear to us, but also to the people that are here listening to this.
And in anybody who has questions, they're certainly welcome to contact us, me, or they can reach out to ACHD and get a clearer understanding. They are the traffic authority and the traffic experts.
And it's basically, if we're starting up here, they're not going to mandate stuff down here. They're going to mandate the stuff around the phase that you're, you're in the middle of, in other words.
Correct. I mean, that's the general rule, is that you improve everything along your frontage, but there are exceptions where you have to improve, improve things beyond for excel lanes, decel lanes, in order to accommodate safety and other things that are needed. um, uh, in order to accommodate safety and other things that are needed. Just just like the city, I mean, it doesn't matter where you start, you have to have sewer, right? All of that comes offsite. So i- i- it's kind of one of those things.
Thank you.
Alright, so that's fair, so I mean, for instance, constructed, dedicated, right turn, center lane, cer- center turn lane on Columbia Avenue K. So, the map that touches Columbia and K is going to be dedicating that right away and doing those improvement plans.
Correct.
So.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that was an extensive report, so. It was a little confusing.
Conditions.
You get a few in, you know what you're, kind of what they're saying, and you get towards the bottom and you lose track of.
Yeah, I'm not sure how I feel about this one, I mean, i- it's it's really is a good looking project. Um, from the aesthetics, I mean, from the design review standpoint, we're getting a good amount of, uh, open space and greenery. Um, and I feel like this is gonna be overall a good thing. Um, the future multifamily, um, which again, will trigger another TIS, I believe. Um, if I recall correctly.
I would imagine it's got to.
Sorry, quick question to staff, will the future multifamily also trigger another traffic impact analysis?
I
I can't remember.
I don't know that one for sure, it it likely will, however, the school will all by itself. Whether it's a charter school or a public school.
Right, cause there's a public safety.
They're they're both public schools, but whether it's charter school or whether it's KSD.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so i- i- and honestly, we're we're hurting for for multifamily in the area, we really are. Um, so.
Well, the way or the things I see here, you know, we're looking at, uh, commercial, which would increase the tax base. We're looking at a school site, we're looking at getting infrastructure put in. Uh, of a lot for a fire station. And the project, I think, is over a ten year period from the schedule that I saw. And the fact that the multifamily in the front would trigger another TIS, as well as the school. Um, you know, it's big. And personally, I'm not, I don't care much for big things, but looking at what this will accomplish as far as infrastructure, as far as commercial, and as far as improvements on Highway sixty nine and the other intersections, there's a lot that, there's a lot that they're bringing to the table.
Okay, I'm gonna ask a really awkward, open ended question, um, and I I, um, one of the big reasons that we're going to a putt as opposed to just sitting within the existing zoning is the fact that they are asking for these, uh, for the thirty six hundred square foot lots.
Hmm, yeah.
Okay, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna lose sight of that. Um, the, I don't have a problem with that product, actually, my first home was on a thirty five hundred square foot lot, and the benefit of that was, it was my first home, um, and it was an opportunity to get into the market. Um, so there are definitely benefits to having a smaller product, uh, especially in our area where we have, we have a lot of bigger houses. Um, but how do we feel about it up against the R one, or I'm sorry, the rural residential on the east? Uh, we do have a really good buffer, we have the the lateral that's going through there, um, but I just wanna put it on, I just wanna make sure that we don't overlook it as part of our discussion. Uh, we do have some green space, but, um, that entire seventy foot, or the the lateral right away cannot be improved beyond gravel, is my understanding, um, because of the the easement and the maintenance requirements. Um, so that being said, I just, I don't wanna lose sight of that as part of our discussion here.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good thing to bring up, I mean, I think there's a lot of buffer there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and and we've been told by several realtors and and people outside of just developers, that that's the product that is being looked for.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's a, there's a couple of different age classes that just don't want to have the responsibility of having a yard or a large yard to take care of. Um, i- it's, it's, it's a product that people are looking for, not just as a starter home, but just as sometimes a retirement home, and just that they don't wanna take care of all the stuff that the rest of us do. And fight over. Um, so, I mean, I I agree, the product is one that's, is actively looked for, which is obviously what you want in development, and I think, you know, we've got most of those properties all set to the other side. Then you have the easement, or you have the whole um, canal, then you have the easement, then you have the landscaping, then you have the homes, and you know they're not gonna be real tall anyways.
Hmm.
So, I'm not sure that that, I'm too worried about that. I, usually, yes, we require a lot more transition there, but I think we inevitably have got that transition between the the canal and the easement, and then the landscaping that's required. Cause I have a feeling a lot of that's gonna be landscaped and blocked or or what, whatever you wanna call it, it's just, there's gonna be a lot of site obstruction there with the landscaping, cause it appears that quite a few trees and everything are are being planned.
And there is a landscape buffer up to the lateral.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I I echo Jim's comments. I think this gives us a lot of what we need in the area for improvements. I'm still worried about the cost of the schools.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I know the developers made some real concessions to go with charter schools, which have been well received by the public. It just depends on what Kuna School District is able to do with this one.
Hmm.
Um, you know, obviously, we'd love to have the district be able to provide a school there. But at least there's a backup plan that the the kids will still have a place to go, hopefully, so hopefully soon. But it will take a while to fill this up.
Mm-hmm.
And they aren't starting in this phase of the multifamily first anyways, it's gonna be in the single family.
Single family's gonna go first, commercial's gonna go first. Yep. Okay.
It's double edged sword on this one, you know, it's I came into this whole thought as not wanting this development. To be quite honest. Even though this has been around for fifteen years, eighteen years?
I think it was
Started in two thousand eight.
Two thousand eight.
And so, you know, back then, it was, it was a great development to come in, cause there was nothing like it in the area.
There was also nothing around it.
Exactly, and we had far less houses and developments at that point that were contributing to the school problem, back then, we didn't have as much of the school problem. And so, um, that got me a little bit worried, this coming in, and I didn't wanna see it come in, but in seeing what they've presented to us, I think it does have some good attributes. And hopefully, we can solve the school problem in the next ten years with that one. You know? I I'm still at a loss.
Yeah, and and that's, that is unfortunately where I kinda struggle, is it's it's hard to, um, you always wanna be hopeful, but at the same time, it's, um, is it responsible to rely on hope? That's the question. So, um, yeah. Yeah.
Well, even even with the school site, you know, school just doesn't pop up. And in order for the district to build a facility, they have to run a bond, they have to go through the design process, they have to go through the construction process. So they're looking at a minimum of three, three to four years to get into a facility.
Correct.
Um, so based on that, by the time they could get into a facility, half of this development would be up.
Well, I'm not quite sure if half of it would be up, but.
Yeah, they're looking at, we're looking at a ten year process for these homes. So the need for the school would be there before the school was there.
But we do have three other charter schools that are gonna be online before then.
Right.
So, I mean, one starts this fall, the other two should be within the next two years, realistically.
And that's gonna take a lot of pressure off of the, um, K through seven, K through six, K through eight.
Yeah.
Um, but really, i- it's the, it's the overall impact to our high schools. Uh, the good news is, I mean, Swan Falls at least half built. Uh, but even then, I mean, it is, it is definitely impacted. So, I really have two minds on this project.
Yeah.
And that's, that's obviously the struggle with all our conversation up here, I think we're all of two minds. Yeah, I don't know what that alarm is.
Yeah. Hopefully it's not something important. Alright, well, I mean, yeah, if there's no other concerns or comments, then.
Yeah, um, okay.
This many people will increase traffic. But we got traffic gonna, there's a ton of traffic mitigation that's gonna occur with this, by this developer. We've got the infrastructure for electrical, if not, they're gonna build it, same with water. They're already saying they're gonna build the sewer, the sewer treatment plant's down the road. So it's not like it has to go far. We got a school site, we got a park, we've got a fire station. Only we're missing is a substation for the police. We got commercial coming in, I worry about the future multifamily, that's a bunch of extra that we haven't even talked about, but that has to come before us down the road. And they may opt to go to commercial on that, if something plays out differently.
So the other aspect of this, um, is none of this, except for the thirty six hundred, um, is outside the existing zoning. So, to some extent, this project is coming, whether we approve this one or another one down the line. Um, I guess that's, that's kind of one of the other aspects of this. It's already zoned that direction.
It's already zoned.
It's not an annexation.
Already got development agreement.
Yeah.
It's already annex, I mean, that's all thing, this was ready to go and approved in two thousand eight. The only thing that's different
Is
is is what's happened in the last seventeen years.
Yes.
And that's, that's been my concern, that's like I said, is I was not against it back then, but there's a lot that's happened since then that is a concern, I mean.
Right.
We hear it from our people in the city, the other citizens, why are we developing so much more, we've already got traffic, we've got this, we don't have the schools for it. You know, I wanna listen to those people around me, this is why I'm on the committee, in the commission, is just to try to make a difference and voice some of these concerns, and 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 yet, in being here for a while, I understand that you gotta have some development to pay for some of those things to do and occur. But I also don't want everybody else to think we're failing them by approving this kind of thing, I mean, it's already approved, really, we're just opening the can of worms again. Um, but we do get a lot out of this one, I just, I'm worried about the schools.
Yep.
Still. This isn't gotten anywhere. I keep saying this, and it's just, you know, I'm trying to make sense as to what really what makes sense on this one. If we were half the size, it would be different. Well, third the size. It's a lot of homes.
Yep.
And I don't, and yeah, it's like, it's already zoned for all of this, so it's it's not like we're changing anything or can stop what was zoned way back when.
Right.
So it's inevitable, to put it simply. But what we might lose is some of the amenities, the benefits, the traffic mitigation they're willing to pay for.
Right.
Cause somebody else can come in here and do something not quite so nice, and not provide quite as much.
The other aspect of that is, um, one of the benefits of a PUD is, I mean, we kinda have a good idea of what's coming now. As opposed to, like you said, if this got split up in the future into multiple developments, each one of them's gonna be a different can of worms on its own. Um, and, uh, I mean, this way, we know what we're getting, we know what the future looks like. And more importantly, the future is being planned for, um, on a large scale. So.
And and to explain that a little bit, is if it gets split up, we wouldn't have some of the traffic mitigation that's being provided, really.
I mean, the the diff Yeah, I mean, the diff fees wouldn't change, I mean, whether one developer pays it or multiple, I mean, potentially in the future, those d- those diff fees are gonna go up um, in the future, so, I mean, but, I mean, that's definitely not a um, what I'm getting at, though, is the overall impact is gonna be the same. Um, it's really just a, um, it would definitely stretch it out over time, um, but the
Maybe. It's not even a guarantee.
Right, that is true, um, but the other aspect is, with a development this large, it's going to be stretched out over time unless and unless they get seven builders knocking on their door, ready to build tomorrow, and are all ready to go for a phase at a time. Um, so, and and that's a possibility, you could have seven different builders walk in and drop sticks on the same day.
Yeah, but you still gotta get the infrastructure in.
Correct, correct. But, uh, to my, my, the point I was trying to make is, with something this large, it's gonna take a little more time to actually get going, potentially, um, so the impacts aren't realized on day one.
No.
And hopefully by the time, okay, I'm using the word hope again. The way it's currently planned, the infrastructure will be in place by the time it's needed. Based on the conditions. So.
That future multifamily still, that worries me a little bit.
So what is the primary concern with the multifamily, just the density? Cause, uh, if I recall correctly, it's a, what what's the number on those?
R twenty.
R twenties, right, um. Yeah, we have ex, we have some existing R twenty in the city, um, I believe pretty much most of our apartments are sitting in the R twelve to R twenty range. Um, and the nice thing about that is, they are gonna come back to us, so approved, uh, are they currently approved at R twenty, it's currently zoned R twenty?
Yeah, that's, yeah, there's no change in the zoning that was given fif- eighteen, seventeen years ago.
Right.
And we can't do anything to change that.
Right, but they're gonna come back for design review at the very least.
Yeah, I mean
And final plat.
Yeah, and it just depends, you know, we can look at it, but we can't, and I think that's just kinda what needs to be understood, is we can't change that, right at this point, but it does worry me. And who knows, that could be another twenty years. Don't I? Would hope, but. Oh, there's that darn word again.
Yeah, it's a scary word.
And this is a recommendation to the city council. They ultimately will hear more public testimony. They will evaluate it from their own accords. It's just whether we think, given the, the zoning, the layout, the design review, et cetera, I guess we do have a design review component to this one.
Yes.
Yeah.
But the PUD and everything is going to be, you know, they have final, so there will be another hearing and information on this, so I guess if if there's a motion.
You looking at me, Jim, or am I looking at you, Jim?
I'm looking at you.
Aw, man. Alright, um.
The only good thing about being here.
Oh, okay, so here's where the road meets the road, huh? Alright, um. Alright, Mr. Chairman, uh, I move to recommend approval of twenty-five dash O one dash PUD, twenty-five dash O four dash S, twenty-five dash O three dash ZC with the conditions as outlined in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will stand as opposed.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve two-five dash O six dash DR, uh, with conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I, uh, any opposed? I will stand opposed on that as well. Thank you. Uh, thank you, um, for all your attention on that, uh, that discussion. I will go ahead and move to the next item, which is case number twenty-five dash O three dash S and twenty-five dash O four dash DR for the Larita subdivision, I believe.
Uh, for the record, Doug Hanson, uh, Planning and Zoning Director, City of Cuna, seven fifty-one West Fourth Street. Uh, staff is requesting that this item be tabled to a date uncertain as we are still working out some sewer serviceability components for the project and are waiting on final public work comments.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move, uh, that we table case two-five dash O three dash S and two-five dash zero four dash DR to a date uncertain.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Um, last item up on the agenda in the public hearings portion is case number twenty-five dash O two dash O A, um, pole signs. Doug?
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Doug Hanson, Planning and Zoning Director, seven fifty-one West Fourth Street, CUNA, Idaho. Uh, the City of CUNA Planning and Zoning Department requests a zoning text amendment application for modifications to the Development Regulations Code for pole signs. Uh, staff believes that the proposed changes will better serve the intent of the sign code to protect property values and create an attractive community while encouraging creative, readable, and uncluttered and well-maintained signage. Uh, special use permit approval would be required for the construction of all pole signs and the zoning districts and locations where pole signs can be constructed will be limited. With the proposed code change, pole signs will only be allowed within the north-south corridor alignment of State Highway sixty-nine Meridian Road Corridor, located within C two area commercial and C three service commercial zones, limiting, uh, the impact that these signs have to a he- a heavy traffic predominantly commercial developments and preserving the neighborhood commercial character of other arterial corridors throughout the city with neighborhood commercial uses and significant residential development. And with that, I will stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
I have one simple question. What's the definition, the city definition of a pole sign?
So the city definition of a pole sign would be a sign erected on a pole-like structure with the predominance of the square footage being placed on top, uh, at or above thirty feet in height. And in this case, that standard would change to just be, uh, it could be below thirty feet in height as well. We took away that limitation. There used to be pole signs to thirty feet and then pole signs beyond. This would just recognize like once, one standard of a pole sign.
So the permanent
Correct.
Signs, okay. Not all the little ones they poke in the ground.
For the record, Doug Hanson, Planning and Zoning Staff, or Director, we would consider that a pylon sign or a temporary banner sign.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Thank you. So with this, uh, we'll go ahead and open up the public testimony for this application at, uh, six fifty-six. And I don't have anybody currently signed to, uh, testify on this application for the pole sign amendment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to? And seeing none, I will go ahead and then close the public testimony at six fifty-six. And that'll bring up our deliberation. I think this one's pretty straightforward. It's just kind of rewriting and clarifying.
Right, and just clarifying the code. I don't have any issue with it.
Yeah, I didn't either. I just kind of wanted to make sure that all these little temporary ones are still classified as temporary. Anything?
Nope.
With that, I would stand for a motion then.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of twenty-five dash O two dash O A with conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Seconded. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, with that, that completes the list of agenda items that I have in front of me tonight. Is there any business items or updates from staff?
That is it for the evening.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.